Okay, sounds like we are all set up here. So I'd like to say good evening, everyone. This is the May 20th, 2020, remote virtual meeting of the Village activity Board of Trustees. I'm going to put my nice little desk flag up here and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands.
One nation.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much.
Good thing we're trying not to sing.
Yes, um, looks like I gotta get, let, get Robin back in here in just a moment. Okay, she's trying to get in, let's see. All right, we'll let Robin get settled and then.
I got booted off.
Huh, all right, well, we'll keep an eye on, on it, and if that happens again, we'll, we'll adjust.
That was odd.
Can hear us, hear us okay, Robin?
I can.
Okay, um, okay, so we did a pledge and we'll start with the village clerks report. Robin, if you would, please.
Absolutely, um, there were three payrolls that were processed since the last meeting. Our deputy clerk is still continuing to work remotely and she has spent some hours in the office, which certainly it's a time that's difficult for her with her other responsibilities. 531 trash tags were sold and we're coming up on Monday, which is Memorial Day. However, with the present circumstances and climate, my intention is that I will not completely be closed and unavailable to our public. I will be checking emails in case anyone needs anything.
Great, thank you, Robin. While we're on the topic of Memorial Day, the Harris Smith Post told me that they are not doing a public ceremony this year. I believe some members of the post are going to have their own private gathering at Monument Hill. But it's not like inviting the public, the mayor won't be making a speech this year. We're trying to not encourage gathering, so, you know, that's, it's too bad, but I hope that everyone will remember Monday is Memorial Day and, and think of all the veterans and their families in our, in our communities.
Yes, after speaking with Mr. Maybe today, Commander Maybe, he did indicate that they wished to have a small ceremony, including those from the post. And I believe he would, would hope that many would join in and remember our fallen soldiers.
Thank you, Robin. Trustees, we have several sets of minutes and in addition to minutes now in the remote age, we also have these transcripts. I want to thank the clerk for finding a good service to do those. And I know that you went through and changed some languages that the transcription got wrong. I did find at least one other, so I'll follow up with you, Robin. There was one that said Village Activity, and I'm pretty sure we said Village of Tivoli. So, we'll go through those, but, so we'll, we'll, we'll accept the minutes and it's also good. And thanks again, Robin, that we're keeping up with this transcription obligation because it is new. So that'll be in the, in the record. So we have minutes from the April 1 special meeting, April 15th, public hearing, and the April 15th regular board meeting. You've had a chance to review those and I would ask for a motion to accept the minutes.
So moved.
That was trustee Cole, is there a second? That was the deputy mayor. All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, I think, I think hand raising is good in this format, it's helpful. Thank you. We have the treasurer's report here, I want to thank Treasurer Day. This month out of the general fund, we spent $97,030.98 for a grand total of $97,030.98. So with that, is there a motion to accept the treasurer's report?
So moved.
That was trustee Schneider and a second from the deputy mayor. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, moving on, is there a motion to pay the bills?
So moved.
There's a second, okay, that was a motion by trustee Israedi, seconded by trustee Cole. All in favor? Aye, and the bills will be paid. Do we have a zoning report, Clerk Bruno, did we receive anything from Mr. Fenton?
No, I did not.
Okay, thank you. Normally, we would have public comment at this period if we were all live in the room. I want to remind residents that the board meetings like this one currently are streaming on YouTube, the Panda YouTube site, and that, you know, again, you can call Village Hall, send an email to myself anytime. We are trying to meet the needs of residents and, you know, your village government is here for you. We miss having you in the room, in, in the Watts de Peister Hall, but you can communicate with us and I will make an appointment to meet with you about whatever you need. And I'll find you in a nice outdoor place with my mask. For regular business, as far as actions this month, we only have budget modifications. I want to spend a little time with these, with the trustees. We are in the final month of our fiscal year, which ends June 1st. There are 12 abstracts throughout the year, and then there's abstract 13, which we will do in June, which covers the last two months of May, because, well, there's, there's 13 abstracts, that's why. But, so we're getting down, you know, budget lines are over, budget lines have money left over. I know you got those in your packet, I'm going to find my hard copy, here it is. And just want to take you through these. We have a number of expenditures primarily in engineering related to various grants. So in those instances, the budget modification process is we have a revenue line called due from other governments, which is where we put these grant revenues that we will get in when we expend the money and file the grant claim and get the money in. So that's a case where our expenses are going up, but we also get to say our revenues are going up. That total is about 11, 11,328. Those various grants are the DOS grant at the waterfront for the shoreline stabilization, Pine Street, excuse me, Crosswalks, Crosswalk Grant, which is very close to going out to RFP. I think we're going to have some actual bids to look at next month. And also early work on our Park Community Development Block Grant as well. Other budget mods, you'll see the $4,750 coming out of fund balance going to TFD admin. That is another payment to PSA Design, Peter Sweeney, architect, working on our vision of an expanded firehouse, that's what that expense is. And then you'll see the rest of it is more budgetary housekeeping, a list of various budget lines that went over, and a list of budget lines where we have some money left, including buildings, police, and attorney, which we are pleased to have some money left over, so we can move that over and cover these other lines. So with that overview, if any trustees have questions for me, Budget Officer, on these budget mods, I will take them now. Okay, with that, I'll ask for a motion to approve these budget modifications, please.
I actually think Susan had a comment or question, Susan, you're muted.
My comment was simply that they looked very reasonable to me, their end of year adjustments, where we have not spent money, where we spent more than we needed, than we had budgeted. They looked good to me.
Good, okay, thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Okay, the motion was made by trustee Israedi and seconded by trustee Cole. Any further discussion? Well, I, I'll be very interested to see in about two or three more weeks where we came in. I think we're going to be very close to coming in on budget. And this unfortunately seems like it might be the last year where that happens. All the projections are that revenues for the year we're entering are going to be very tight indeed, so. I'm pleased that Tivoli had money and we have spent it on all sorts of things in the last five years. You know, during good times, we've replaced vehicles, we've done sidewalks, we've fixed up this building. We've done a lot of good things with the money that we had. And it does look like we may not be able to do those sorts of things as easily, certainly in the year to come. So with that, I'll just do a roll call, I think it's a little easier to approve these budget mods. Trustee Cole?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor, Major?
Aye.
Trustee Schneider?
Aye.
And trustee Israedi?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. The budget mods are adopted, thank you all. That includes our business as far as actions. We have a number of other things to discuss as a board. And I would like to invite Council Christine Shaw to start with us talking about 83 Broadway, which is sadly deteriorating property. And it's been so for quite a while, the code enforcement officer has posted it. And I want to turn it over to Chris Shaw now to explain to the board kind of the process from here.
Yes, thank you. So we have a report from John Fenton and we've reviewed the documentation that he provided. The, John will be sending out an additional notice. And we will be recommending that the mayor send a further notice to the owner. But basically, we are at the point where John's going to be recommending moving to demolish. There is a substantial, he thinks, danger to the property. He is, I think, in more, more dangerous position than it was before. And certainly all the problems that he cited originally back in October, November, when he, I think, first cited them have continued. So he's going to be moving forward with that, so look for that in the next month or so.
And so the first communication is to give them one last chance to remedy? And then if that does not happen, then we schedule the hearing?
I think what we're going to recommend that you do is go ahead and schedule the hearing, but he will be sending them a further notice to notify them that the, you know, the premises remains in a dangerous condition. Obviously, it's posted, they're aware of it, they've had communication with him, but they haven't pursued the remedy, so he feels that it's a, it's a danger to the community. So he thinks it needs to be pursued.
So, Susan?
Chris, I have not had the opportunity to read John Fenton's recommendations. Does this have to do primarily with stuff that is blocking things like fire entrances and exits, or is it structural?
No, this is structural, yeah, this is the roof and the foundation being unstable and, you know, things of that nature.
Okay.
Right, yeah.
Any other questions on this process? Chris, will you, you and I talked the other day about at what point the board has to approve? Do they approve the findings of the hearing or setting the hearing?
No, so that's something that you will do to carry out the hearing function. If you remember, last time we went through a process like this, once the hearing was concluded, you did come back to the board to request authorization to expend funds for demolition, which then you would be expecting to record as a lien on the property. And that particular situation, the owner came forward at that point and dealt with the situation. So the, so that the village didn't actually have to do that. But, you know, so the next step would be potentially for the, for, for you to bring back to the board at some point, the request for funding to move forward with demolition. Obviously, in the meantime, there may be emergency measures that are necessary. So that'll be something that John will have to keep an eye on.
Yes, yeah, okay, thank you, Chris.
Yep.
So trustees, I again want to apologize that I didn't send this document to you as soon as I got it, but you all received the numbers from Peter Sweeney and PSA Design associated with the vision of an expanded firehouse. And I will confess, it's a hard document to read and understand what all the numbers are. I don't know if you had that experience, but I think we should chat about it a little bit. And I, I personally would like to, perhaps at our next workshop, have him join us to take us through the document. But I want to open it up for any of you to ask questions or give comments on the products we received for hiring him back in February, January?
Well, I'm impressed with the deliverable. I mean, it is, it is what we had asked for and more. So, I mean, it's, it's a lot of information and, you know, I look forward to going through it with him. But I think it gives us, you know, it's, it sort of gives us a start wrapping our mind around, so. And some really nice looking drawings.
It does seem extremely detailed. Other comments or questions, are we all interested in actually having him at a, one of these Zoom meetings? So he can take us through it? I mean, I have a hard time knowing what I'm looking at, frankly, please.
And mute.
I was just agreeing, I think it would be great to have him here as a resource so that we can make sure that we've got a comprehensive understanding of the proposal.
I, I agree, I would love to have him take us through the documents.
Okay, very good, then I'll reach out to him and, I imagine the next time would be our June workshop? Okay, very good, well, well, we're on the firehouse, two other things. Those beautiful red doors are in place, they're getting a lot of praise. And it's very moving to see the plywood gone and the doors in place. And, you know, I want to say the whole Tivoli Fire Company and Chief Mark Hildenbrandt have just been tremendous. We're very fortunate that those people were involved in that organization to get us through this rebuilding process. We're very close to finished. In the, in the coming weeks, I'd say within the month, you know, the final punch list will get done. We will have to look at the punch list and the final payments with the contractor. And, you know, there's still a few outstanding things, notably the, the rutted lawn from the construction and making sure that everything is wrapped up before we make final payments. Crawford and Associates have been inspecting as we go along to keep an eye on the work. They've been fabulous. Also, on the topic of Tivoli Fire, some folks may have heard the other evening, the old firehouse siren, which is on the roof of this building, that went defunct about 10 years ago. But for those of us who've been in Tivoli longer than 10 years, it was an amazing, amazingly nostalgic and familiar sound, even having been quiet for 10 years. That noon whistle, I've started doing some research. So it's a big old, I think it's from the 50s, this particular siren, it's up on the roof of this building. And it used to go off every single day at noon. And some people I've talked to have told me that was the case going back into the 50s, you know, before cell phones and digital watches and, you know, that was how you knew that it was 12 o'clock. But also, more importantly, it blew when there were fires. You know, it's both a nice historic, small town sort of element, but also in the world we're living in and the sort of climate disasters that have been very near to us, I do feel it's important that we get the siren working. With the number of calls that the Tivoli Fire and Rescue attend, I don't think we want it going off on every call, because sometimes that's three and four times a day. However, the Fire Chief's proposal is that it blow for a structure fires, which are sort of the big deal. So it would go off at noon daily, so we all know it works, adds a little charm to our community. It would go off at structure fires with a certain blast. In the old days, it would blast 10 times for a structure fire. And also, I think we need another blast for sort of like a weather event. You know, God forbid, we had a hurricane, tornado, something like that. So the test they conducted the other night lets us know that the siren itself spins and will produce sound. So now Chief Hildebrandt and I are talking to various alarm companies who put the computer, these days it's a computer with the various blast tones, length of blast, and you can set your own siren language. This sound is just normal routine test, this sound is structure fire, this sound is weather event. So we're going to be working on that and I'll come to you all with, you know, the prices and the possibilities, but. Personally, I'm so excited that the siren still worked. There was some electrical thing that went about 10 years ago. It started blasting at various times of the day, not just noon. And so it was just sort of decommissioned. And then it sat without spinning for 10 years and it spun the other night, so. That was exciting, I do think we want to be prepared to explain to people who have been in Tivoli less than 10 years, what this is, because it's, it's a real siren, you can hear it, you know. Are there any questions or comments from the board on the siren project? I think going along with that, I've learned a few things, I want to do a little more history. Betty Simmons, it's Betty, right? Betty Simmons, James Simmons' mother, she had the job, in the old days, they actually had a special phone in their house and they had to ring it at noon to create the noon whistle. And they also had to ring it 10 times to do, do the structure fire alarm. And they actually apparently took it over from a couple who used to live on Washburn Avenue. And the idea that there were residents entrusted with sort of the, the red phone for the firehouse siren is so fascinating, it's so different than how we do things now, when everything is automated. And so I'm hoping to, if she's amenable, get someone to interview her, kind of a story core thing, and, and learn what we can, you know, I asked Ralph Senior, and he said when he was, you know, 10 years old and his family came here in the 50s, it was going off every day. I said, well, when did they start that? He said, you got to ask Betty. So it'd be a nice little community history project as we bring back this siren to the village. I've been talking with library director, Michelle Duprior, about the eventual reopening. And, you know, one of, one of the things that both Village Hall and the library need to figure out is how often will be open to the public? And then getting a good cleaning regimen in place. I believe the library board is meeting again tomorrow, but we're sort of mapping out the possibilities. You know, neither libraries nor the municipal buildings are open right now. Depending on how the government's phasing happens, at some point, we may be authorized to reopen to the public. And it's obviously important that the village of Tivoli and the Tivoli Free Library coordinate, because we are in the same building with the same doorknobs and the same bathrooms. So we have identified a good cleaning service who has done some cleaning for the village before. They would be willing to be hired to do like a daily clean of, of all the public spaces. So they're sort of waiting in the wings for the library and the village to, to know how much we can be open, when, you know, it's certainly going to be an added cost. The service runs about $30 an hour with a minimum of two hours. So if you're open five days a week and we have to do this for months, that adds up real fast. We might think about being open several days, not five days, something like that. So just want to let you know that I'm talking with the library and we're going to get ready to both open, but also keep, keep Watts de Peister Hall as clean and disinfected as possible. So if anyone has any questions or thoughts on that topic, I'll listen for a moment. And so normally, we would be moving on now to committee reports. This, this meeting is sort of a blended formal meeting and workshop. I'm starting to lose my sort of structure of the formal meeting. So if any trustees have questions or comments on anything, you just raise your hand, we'll take turns talking and listening, I think that's perfectly good way to go. Susan?
Just like to comment on our fire department. One of the challenges of staying at home and social distancing and wearing masks is that we lose the social, community element and our fire department by celebrating the Bard students and doing a, a drive-through on Sundays with horns flashing and sirens whaling, gets people out of their houses and cheers us up. And I think that's, it's clearly voluntary, but it's quite wonderful that they're doing that. The other thing I'd like to comment on is the length of service award program is invested with RBC Wealth Management. That program was up to about 176,000 at the end of February. In March, it actually lost about 25,000 in unrealized capital gains. It's come about halfway back with that, but we are keeping track of it. It remains above the amount of funds that were contributed to it. So there hasn't been a real loss in the sense that there's less money in it that, that was placed in it. And of course, it's had substantial withdrawals as firemen reach 65. So it looks like the program that we had in place is doing a good job of preserving value and in good times adding value to that fund.
Thank you, trustee Israedi, it's good to hear. Deputy Mayor?
Okay, so I just have, you know, a bunch of information about, I mean, it's, it's been amazing, you know, how the support network continues to, you know, keep us all together. And the, moving forward, the county is looking for contact tracers, volunteers. So if you are interested in doing that four-hour training for it and you can contact the website dcpersonnel@duchessnewyork.gov rather, to get involved with that. Red Hook Response is killing it. I mean, that's just, it's such a phenomenal organization. Organization that's really taking care of a lot of people and and giving people, you know, giving folks a good way to get involved. Other good ways to get involved. If you, if you feel like you want to, like you're able to make donations to the United Methodist Church Food Pantry, they are, they are providing groceries to so many families now. And there's a lot of bang for your buck in doing that. Also, the Duchess County Community Action Agency, they have an office in Red Hook. They, they also operate a food pantry, but also they help people with, you know, various, you know, if you are having problems with your health insurance, if you need help filling out forms, whatnot, you can contact them. So that's the Duchess County Community Action Agency. I think the ball for me in all this has been getting out in nature and we're so lucky to have this great nature around us. It is baby animal season, which is awesome, but that also means it's angry mama season. So when you see those adorable baby owls, for example, stay away from them because the mama is nearby and she will swoop you. I had that experience last night. It was a little bit terrifying. So give the baby animals some space. And one thing that will not give you space right now is the ticks. They are out and all the different kinds of ticks are out. The little kinds of ticks, the big kinds of ticks, they're out and they're hungry. So be cool in nature and, and be sure to pick up your dog poop. And congratulations to the Bard grads and the high school grads. I mean, Bard grads, this would have been their weekend. So good luck to you. And, and what a tremendous accomplishment. So they shall be proud and, and I know I'm going to miss some of them a lot.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Other trustees? The Deputy Mayor and I also accepted an invitation for a nice meeting from the Bard College Administration today. A number of deans and other administrators. And they are proactively setting up communication with the town of Red Hook and the two villages. Mayor Blundell and Supervisor McKeon were also on this meeting today. And obviously, none of us in the municipalities or at the college know what the world is going to allow or be like in a month, two months, three months, four months. So you know, but hopefully, if, if they're able to have a semester next fall, you know, normally, new students are already back in early August, the, the first years. So as they are figuring out what's going to happen, what will be possible, they are communicating with the other, you know, entities in the community. We are one township. We're one, one family. And we all decided today that that meeting would be an ongoing meeting weekly if there's things to talk about. And, you know, just so as we move through the summer, the communities will know what the college is planning. I know for the village of Tivoli, we really appreciate that level of communication and, you know, our communities are so blended and the virus likes that. And so it's more important than ever that we all communicate, everyone within the town, the college, the municipalities and the students and the non-students. And so it was just a, it was a good meeting today and that will continue. And I just want to say thanks to Bard College and I will second my classmate, Deputy Mayor Azabard Grad myself. Congratulations to the class 2020. And also, I I was contacted just this afternoon by some folks trying to organize something for the kindergarten graduates, possibly a sort of drive-up, get your diploma kind of thing. So I'll be talking with them more about, they may like to do that in Tivoli somewhere. So I'll be talking to them about how that could be done safely, but I'm also an alum of Mill Road School. And so if Tivoli gets to be the place where they do this drive-up commencement ceremony, that would be fabulous. Because whether you're graduating at 21 or at five, it's a once in a lifetime thing and really feeling for all those graduates at all those life chapters who are having to have a different experience than most of us were lucky enough to have. So that could be very cute. We'll see. All right. Well, that's all our business for tonight. Want to give trustees another opportunity to speak or comment. I want to thank everyone for enduring these, these Zoom meetings and carrying on with your dedication to the village as we have to change the way we do business. So thank you all. Anything else before we adjourn? Okay, do we have a motion to adjourn? Deputy Mayor, is there a second?
Second.
All right. All in favor? Aye. Okay, 7:41 by my watch. And thank you all. We are adjourned. We'll see you in the second Wednesday of June for our workshop. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.